My call to order the Planning Commission regular session, Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tassero Ave., September 6, 2022. Roll call, please.
Grossman present.
Holloway present.
McCoy present.
Strube present.
Huda present.
Let it be shown that we have a quorum. Can I ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does anyone object to the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will be taken by unanimous consent. We don't have any public hearings. We don't have -- is anybody signed up? Do we have any comments?
No.
From anybody to be read? Okay, unfinished business, review of proposed zoning ordinance amendments regarding accessory dwelling units.
So in your packet, I have done a staff report. And so this is hopefully to incorporate your conversation from our last meeting. I did go through that multiple times and confirm with the staff in the office. You actually took no votes during that meeting. So hopefully I've reached what I think were the consensus positions. If I didn't, that's what tonight is all for, to correct me. So with that said, the changes that I inserted from that last month's meeting are shown in the red italic font. And if you were looking for something to be stricken from it as well, that's shown in the blue italic font or strike through as well. I'm sorry. Red font was our prior version, version one, from several months ago. I apologize. Blue is this new version of the additions of language or strikes of language. So with that said, in our intent statement, again, I think we still felt the need to have an intent statement, but we struck two items. Striking out the providing affordable housing options and adding in language so that the county, the housing use of the town and the county, and to provide flexibility to property owners to be able to utilize the ADUs' overflow space for their own family use as needed. So we'll stop there. Anybody have any?
Yeah, I have a comment, and it will be applicable later on, too. Overflow for their own families and guests.
And guests, okay.
And I don't think we need the S needed. Because you wouldn't use it unless you need it.
Okay. Any other changes? Okay, moving on. So under number two, nothing changed under that first paragraph. Under physical characteristics, we struck out area after kitchen. And we still retained sleeping area as a new addition to this language.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Does, when we say a kitchen, does that imply a separate room?
No.
Nope.
Doesn't have to be.
No.
No.
I've got just a comment or clarifying. I've always looked at this, when we talk floor area exceeding 45% of the floor area of the main building, you know, we have a definition for floor area, and it's the gross horizontal area of a building, meaning both floors. I always looked at accessory dwelling units. Sometimes somebody can interpret, well, it's really just the second floor of the unit. But in this particular case, I just want to make sure no one's confused that it's the entire accessory building versus the entire principal house. You see what I'm saying?
It says accessory dwellings. It doesn't say, it doesn't say accessory.
See, I've always had this in the back of my mind as clear, perhaps clear to me. But again, it may be not clear where a person says, I'm going to convert my second story of a garage into an accessory dwelling unit. So if you go and say, okay, an accessory dwelling unit has to be an accessory structure, you're talking about the entire two floors, both the garage floor and the living area above.
Or it could just be a first floor. It doesn't even.
Or it could be first floor. I'm just saying, when it gets into second floors, that's where it gets a little confusing, or could get confusing. I am okay with this wording. I just want to say this could lead to questions.
I don't have my definitions with me from 2.9, but when you talk floor area, if the definition there says it's the entire structure.
It is. It's the, well, they talk the gross horizontal areas of a building. So it's the whole, the whole structure versus the whole structure.
It's covered there.
Yeah, I'm okay. I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable then, that this is okay and can be interpreted.
That's fine, but why, you're absolutely right. Under, under 1B, why couldn't it say accessory buildings shall not have a floor area exceeding 45% of the floor area of the main building? That's what we're talking about, right? It's the whole building.
If it's either one or two stories.
Right, but it's still the whole building, whether it's, I mean.
What about if you take the S off of dwellings and add building?
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling building shall not have a floor area exceeding 45%, blah, blah, blah. Then it gets to that very issue.
It's clear. I don't know, from your perspective, Katie?
Isn't there a, isn't accessory dwelling unit dependent upon accessory dwelling definition?
Well, this is where we're defining what an accessory dwelling unit is.
Right.
Yes. I guess I'm not hearing the distinction of what your concern is, why you feel this doesn't represent.
It does, but it could be, somebody could read into it. I'm just looking at the second floor, not being aware of it. That's my accessory dwelling unit if I'm concentrating on the second floor. And oh, it's only, you know, 300 square feet, and I'm looking at my main house and, you know, 2,000 square feet.
It may be a form issue more than anything else.
Okay, so again, just so we're all clear. So we do want to ensure that the entire accessory structure, whether it's all been assigned for use as the dwelling component, is being counted in this total floor area in comparison to the principal structure of the property.
Right.
Okay.
However, that's more the best.
I just, okay, so now I hear that we just want to make sure that's the intent that's conveyed here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Got it. Let me see, let me see if I need to tweak this relative to the definitions of those two things, the floor area, gross floor area, et cetera.
Yeah, you know, we or you, as you're evaluating, certainly know what it means, but I'm just saying.
Let's make it really clear.
A person picking it up.
Got it.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's why I made the comment, it may be a form issue.
Okay. Okay, so then, under occupancy characteristics, we had just a little tweak here. So I've added a new characteristic or definition. I needed to add it here, not under our definition section, just to make sense as you read this section of the ordinance. So I added transient occupancy, also referred to as short-term rentals, means any persons who, for any period of not more than 30 consecutive days, either at his own expense or at the expense of another, lodges or obtains lodging at any hotel motel tourist motel, motel tourist home or other facility. Accessory dwelling units may not be rented on a transient occupancy basis. And then, under length of stay, again, I retained it at the 30 days that we had in our ordinance recommendation before. I just cleaned up some of the language or reworded this so it reads. So again, for a period no less than 30 consecutive calendar days, either paying a fee for such occupancy at his own expense or at the expense of another. Everything else is the same, all the way through B. And then, under C, the property owner where the accessory dwelling unit is located may utilize the ADU's overflow residential space for members of their family and guests. And I'll take out as needed.
The only thing I have there is, in 3A, we use the term transient occupancy, but then we talk about means a person. So would that be dramatically transient occupant, means a person?
I copied this straight from the tax code of the towns.
This is the town code, yeah, yeah. I'm fine with the way it's.
I just didn't want there to be any discrepancy from town tax code to this, to the zoning ordinance relative to this issue.
Katie, then this is going to be subsequently revised to 60 days, is that correct?
No.
Unless that's where you guys want to be, you need, that's the conversation today.
Yeah, I'm of the opinion we should go back to 30 to make it consistent with the tax code as well. Whether it's 60 or 30, we were trying to be somewhat dramatic in trying to move it to 60, and we talked, well, maybe you should make it 90 or whatever. So I'm all right with the 30, and everything is inconsistent.
I think one of the most important reasons for all of this is that we can, these can count as affordability housing. And, you know, that's one of the bigger buttressing factors of it, 60 days. And if you go down to 30 days, we've already had lots of discussions about how you can easily kind of get around that. So I don't know, I wouldn't just drop back to 30 days without a considerable amount of thought and attention to all the aspects that are involved.
I tend to agree with Paul in that we would end up with two definitions of transient occupancy with two different time periods. And that could create an issue for us.
Yep.
Just the word transient automatically has a 30-day definition associated with it?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Well, you know, you have the experience more in that particular zoning area, I know, and so, as I said, if this doesn't weaken the affordability housing.
And just to chime in on this, I know, I believe, I shouldn't say I know, I've had conversations with the town manager, and clearly, it's on his priority list from the town council, is to look at trying to address and improving our ordinance requirements associated with transient occupancy, more specifically, short-term rentals. And right now, it is all being handled through the taxation policy documents that we have, not through your zoning ordinance. So I believe that's going to be coming to the Planning Commission in the near future for us to start crafting some additional language addressing short-term rentals through our zoning ordinance. So from that regard, I'm with, I'm with the conversation at this point. Let's go ahead and try and mirror up to how the taxation is in that definition, and don't have a time period gap, which is where we were headed to, saying, okay, from day one to day 30 would be covered under short-term rental policy, but then we would have had a gap from day 31 to day 59. What policy would it fall under, and how do we regulate that? And then when we were considering going to 60, that would have been regulated as an ADU. So I'm with trying to stay to a consistent policy of time. So if I've got 1 to 30 covering under short-term rental policy, and then 31 through forever under this policy, then we've handled all the lodging considerations of renting out your property, so.
So with this section, I'll just ask the group, just step back, and just, just thought for me was, are we tight enough with this criteria so that the principal house rented as a short-term rental doesn't extend to the ADU? Just, just again, we're trying to prevent somebody extending their short-term rental and, oh, there's something else out there for another person to sleep, or whatever. I feel comfortable, I just want to put that on the table when we talk loopholes and trying to close, you know, people playing with this.
That's why, again, you've all heard my position, I tend not to like negative declaratory statements, but this one, I think screams for it. So there is no loophole, it's just a big fat no. Sorry. As my mother would say to me.
We've had a number of accessory dwellings come up recently. Is there enough history, do we know, that they're all being used for affordability and not temporary?
Under our current ordinance, they are required to rent on a long-term basis, meaning a 30-day or longer period. So that's required under our conditional use permit process and paperwork. Yes, today.
And the affordability issue is really not what's in play here, it's the length of time.
Right.
Because it's a homeowner's prerogative of whatever they want to charge.
Right.
Whether it's a market rental.
That's correct. So nowhere are we indicating what those rents should be or the income levels to be served, we're just trying to say we would like a longer-term stay. That's all, that's all our current ordinance requires, and that's all we're trying to continue that tradition. Yes. Okay. Number, sorry, my numbering is off. I will fix that, I don't know what happened there. The other three. Under other requirements, none of that is new, that was in our last version. And same with what is amounts to A all the way through E. What did change, or what I did not include in last month's packet, I tried to email it to you that night, didn't do it successfully, but I've now included the annual certification relative to the safety inspection, so that affidavit is in your packet, so we can talk about that here in a minute.
Hey, before we leave that real quickly.
Yes.
Under there, it talks about the, a separate water meter. Is it, is it necessary to have a separate electric meter for these?
No.
No.
No?
And all it is, it's just a may. There is not a requirement. If you do choose to do so, I think in the sewer and water code of the town code, they provide some pricing incentive or reduction, if I'm remembering correctly, on what that cost is to have separate meters.
Okay, sorry.
Sure.
On the G there, G3.
Yep.
The new property owner, you have to insert owner, will be required to submit.
Oh, I forgot owner, okay. Thank you.
And it's, I forgot, up here, on 3A, there's a closed per inch that's needed after short-term rentals.
Where are you, Paul?
On 3A. Transient occupancy also referred to as short-term rentals in brackets, and then you have a closed per inch after.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay.
And Katie, where are we on getting all of the requirements and the zoning wording so that we don't have to have a conditional use permit for every single one that comes up?
That's, that's all in this proposed ordinance, we're moving this to a by right use. What you don't see yet is the affidavit, the annual affidavit on zoning compliance, that other form that's referenced in here, just because until this gets finalized, I can't create that form, because I don't know all the rules and regulations yet to create the annual certification of zoning compliance.
Michael, right in item number two, it strikes out contingent upon approval as a conditional use in accordance with 4.3, so that's.
And this will move to a by right listing under the zoning district. Yes. Okay, then moving on down to B, under definitions, under kitchen, we tweaked this, and we just struck the words that include a sink as it relates to the kitchen definition. Otherwise, I left bathroom and bedroom as definitions for us. And sleeping area. Everybody good? Okay, and then, with that said, I'm correcting a definition of accessory building that we have right now in our ordinance, and again, also striking any reference to a conditional use permit as part of that requirement.
So one of the end results of all this, we're taking ourselves out of the accessory dwelling business, that's going to largely fall into the zone, that's it.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
For this particular change, does it have to accompany now the Article III changes, where if we do take the conditional, it has to move?
Yes, I will add that in.
As part of this zoning change?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, any other changes?
And will that only be R1?
No, because actually, accessory dwelling unit actually sits in Article IV, which is a general regulation applicable to all zoning districts, so.
But it's limited, it's limited right up front in item number two to R1, R2, RE, and CR.
Right, which I will do the same, I will keep all of those remaining districts and just say that it's now a by right use. That's all I'll do. I'm still going to leave it in Article IV.
On the checklist, second paragraph on the first page there, looks like a word that's dropped off, will schedule set inspection with five days of providing written notifications?
I think a written request. Because one of the issues that I, we see happening in the office, people call pretty much, maybe the day before, guests are due to arrive.
Okay.
Anticipating or requiring us to go do the inspection right then, because they've got these bookings. That's not okay for our operations at all. So we want to be a little more stringent upon, there has to be an appropriate timeframe for us to get you truly booked, and not just call us that morning, and we got guests coming in at four.
All right, so the word is request.
Yes.
And then the only other question I had is on item number three, on stairs and stairway, the last sentence there, is the stairway illuminated? Should it be, can the stair, can the stairway be illuminated? Right, I have stairways that don't have lights, you know, when I see this question, I'm thinking I've got embedded lights somewheres down the stairway, but I think you're just saying.
We're just asking.
I need a light?
It's, it may not be required, depending upon, do you have a stairway, stairway, how big is it, you know, how tall, how many stairs are involved with it, it may or may not require it. So this really, this is being self-reporting, so we're trying to get people to report this to us, and the building officials then determine, is that something he should go out and do a self, a personal inspection? Because maybe it wasn't up to the building code standards, or it's okay with him from that answer, because he's familiar with this property and he knows this.
Yeah, I guess I just didn't know what the intent was, do I just have a light switch?
Yeah.
That as I walk up the stairs, a light switch allows me to see the steps?
He didn't, again, Jeb, Jeb did go through all of this, I can tell you, when we were doing this one, he didn't make an intent that all the stairwells had to be lit, so I'm not, I'm not exactly clear, but I'll follow up with him and confirm that.
That's the question, if it has to have embedded lights, I'd find that a little strange, but maybe in new homes.
Okay.
Well, okay.
I think it could just be a wall switch.
Well, that's all I'm saying, I don't know what this question is.
A ceiling fixture at the top of the stairs that blows light down the stairs.
Right, 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 that's all I'm trying to get at there.
Okay.
Can the stairway be illuminated? There's a better question for me. That's all I have.
Yep. We don't care how, just to make sure it happens.
There you go.
Can and is it? And what, and how is it illuminated?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'm ready to declare victory on ADUs.
Any other changes?
Throughout the rest of the document?
No, no, just for this.
Oh, okay.
Through the ADUs. Because I would like a confirmatory vote that this represents your recommendation going to the town council again.
Yeah, I'll put a motion on the table.
Second.
The staff report with the noted changes.
Yes, right.
Thank you.
I'll second. So we have a motion of the staff report with recommended changes, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Oppose? Great. Great job.
Yes.
Only took a while, but several months.
But, yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there.
So just so you know, the process, at this point, this will be presented to the town council at their meeting next Thursday. And if they agree with this, then we will move it out to public hearing.
Right.
So we are trying not to spend our money frivolously if they really are not in agreement with these changes. Okay? Okay.
That will follow the 6:30 to 8:30 meeting, or? No, that's a different, it's Thursday, we're having the.
Thursday of next week.
Sorry, next Thursday, the regular town council meeting, I'll have this on that agenda. Yes.
All right, so next is the standing staff reports, so back to you, okay?
Either the chairman or Commissioner Grossman could also chime in.
So, this is on me. First of all, we had, from the last, our last meeting, it was decided that we would have a committee, a housing subcommittee formed from, to look into the Berkeley Group's document, overcoming land use ordinance barriers to housing development, of which every commissioner got the copy prior to last meeting. So it was decided that Katie, Paul, and myself would be on that subcommittee. We've met every Friday since that, we started that, so we've met four Fridays, I believe that's correct. A lot has been done. I will say, most of, most of the, the nug work, if you will, was done by Paul, so thank you, Paul. Paul and his tables. He did a great job. And Katie followed through on all that stuff. So, so where we stand right now is, we have, we have six factors that, eight factors, I'm sorry, there are eight factors. We have completed the first factor, pretty much. And we've also, as it says in your document here, we've also done a spreadsheet that identifies all the districts and all the conditions, and whether it's either by right or a conditional use of permit. So it's in a spreadsheet format, so it's readily, and it's included in your packet, it's readily and easily used, and it follows what the Berkeley Group had done for Northampton County. So that's basically been done, too. So we also have looked at factor two and factor three. So the intent now is, in follow-on meetings now, we will probably try to cover one factor a meeting, and let you all look at this. So, but meanwhile, we'll still continue our subcommittee meetings, setting the stage, okay?
Yeah, what we're finding out, even though we've gone through factor one, and we still have a couple of open items, but when you get to factor three, for instance, we found definitions there, they said, straighten out your definitions. And so you start doing it, oh, wait, we just talked about that in factor one. So some of these are interrelated, and it may be that we have to get a certain way through the factor tables, so that we're comfortable with bringing something here for a review.
The question I had was, the blue color that's, when we get to page 19 in our packet, some of the, I know the yellow is where we're supposed to focus, but I just wasn't sure what's.
some of the, I know the yellow is where we're supposed to focus, but I just wasn't sure what the blue meant.
The blue, the blue was a flag to me saying I was uncertain to go back and, you know, ferret out or maybe I just am uncertain the way the language is, um, presented, that I couldn't make a clear determination. After a while, you go cross-eyed with, with the use tables there and...
So, one last thing is, uh, as part of the comp plan, uh, we are required, uh, this is just recently enacted in state code, we are required to address manufactured housing. So, uh, we think we've got, done a pretty good job of that, so, uh, so, uh, if you look on, I don't know what page it is, but, uh, I think it's seventeen. That, that definition there, uh, we've changed that somewhat, so, uh, we don't, we don't have, uh, like, it says dwelling, mobile home, or manufactured housing. We, we've changed it somewhat in the definitions, which is factor three. Uh, so, mobile home is out, basically, but, but there are those that still use the word mobile home, so we, we include it, but it's kind of, you know, like in parentheses or whatever. So, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. And so, uh, we also have to give this to our Summit Group, uh, because they're the ones that have the ball right now. Anything else? So, I guess we can look forward to seeing that next month, our, our first factor.
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right, super. All right. And if you want to, since we have a, this is a PDF file, um, on the conversion of, of the proposed changes, we have that in a spreadsheet, so... All right, so, next thing is, I'm getting there.
Well, it ties in nicely to my standing staff report.
Okay.
Which is the next item.
This September twenty-two, September twenty-two monthly report?
Yes.
Staff report.
So, actually, I'm going to jump down to, um, the stats report and update to the comprehensive plan number four first, just to tie in with this conversation relative to Summit. We have vigorously been working with them this summer. We will have the final draft of the comprehensive plan coming out at the end of October. Um, and in fact, at the joint meeting that is scheduled, and we're going to talk about that here shortly, where you're going to receive, um, a, a meeting and update where we are with the historic district and comments, et cetera, with town council, with, uh, the historic district review board, et cetera. We will be handing you, unlike where you are now with the historic district guidelines, we will be handing you the full hard copy of the comprehensive plan update for you all to take away with you at the end of September's meeting, uh, to have the entire month of October to digest that document and weigh in on it. And then we'll, we're going to schedule a meeting at the end of October, which I have on the, on the calendar at this point. We need to confirm your calendars, um, for us to do a joint meeting again with our consultant and go over that entire document, because we are coming, we think, to the home stretch of the comprehensive plan update. So, in that regard, we also have now started to align our calendars and schedules and to-do list with Summit Engineering, because the second component of what we have commissioned them to do is start working on the zoning ordinance update. And so, at this point, I will be, um, working with staff. We, we will be providing what we consider a bulleted list of the changes we think need to happen in the zoning ordinance, whether it be certain definitions, sections, themes as a whole. Summit will also be doing their own audit of the zoning ordinance to see what needs to change, especially in relation to the comprehensive plan document that they have drafted on our behalf. So, we are both coming to a head at the same time, trying to work on what we think is, is, needs to happen in the zoning ordinance. So, a lot of the work that the housing committee is doing will be provided directly to Summit, uh, to incorporate into their work product of what the zoning amendments should happen and how they should happen. So, at this point, I don't have a calendar mapped out as to when the zoning ordinance changes. We'll be coming forward to a public hearing process. I'm envisioning it's going to start late November into December, probably not getting fully adopted till sometime January and February. But that's our goal, is we really want to wrap up the zoning ordinance amendments, um, by right around the beginning of 2023. Yay! So, as soon as I provide and, and, and get that list finalized, which, which will happen here in the next two weeks, um, I'll get a copy of that entire list to you as well, so that you know what I've been tracking and what we've noted over the last year of things that bother us in the zoning ordinance. That, that some clarity would really assist our operations. And so, we'll, that way, we can all then have a, potentially a work session, if that's what we need to do, or just a regular session, just to kind of walk through it a little bit, see if I've missed something that you've noted along the way that I just dropped the ball on, so. So, with that said, um, I'm now going to jump back to the beginning of my staff report. Sorry, I just wanted to tie that all together, why we're, we're working so hard on this. So, I, I did not have any subdivisions come forward, but one of the things that came forward for us in the office this last three weeks, four weeks or so, um, one of the new subdivisions that has been approved since I've come on board, right from the beginning, Village L. J, L, it is L, sorry. When I asked the question, what's, what's the documents or process to actually accept all the infrastructure work that's happened for us to say this has been done according to the town's standards? I don't think we really had a really good process in place. So, I stepped forward and working with Bay Creek and, and our, and our attorney as well, we've been drafting what those documents really should look like, so there's something formally acceptable, that they're tests that support, that we tested the water flow, that we've tested the sewer flow, um, that we have certification on the road quality. And we signed some real documents, some legal documents, accepting this stuff, some of it to be recorded in the clerk's office as well, um, that we're accepting transfer and there are warranties associated with all the work product for a period of time by Bay Creek and then when the town will accept and take over complete and full ownership of those infrastructure investments. So, that's been a, a big issue for me to work on this, this past month. I noted it just because it's taken a fair amount of my time to get those documents going, so. In the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, as you know from last month, they are hearing two applications for potential purchaser of the corner property on Bay and Washington Avenue. We kept that hearing open before the BZA last month, because they, they recognized that they needed to do some amendments and revisions to that application. So, that is still coming forward now into the September process, uh, to continue that public hearing. I do have their revised application. It's not as revised as I was hoping for, um, so this is going to still be a very, um, robust conversation for the BZA with the applicant. And, and we definitely had a large crowd at the BZA meeting last month, who, um, are deeply interested in what's going to happen to this property and whether it should be developed and, and based upon their application, um, to the number of homes that they are seeking, sizes of the homes, placement of, of amenities on, on that property. So, I think September is going to be, uh, again, a very lengthy meeting for the BZA on this issue. And we'll keep you apprised as that moves forward and, and the planning commission, of course, can always weigh in on this, uh, you have that right. That's why we're keeping you informed of any application that comes forward to the BZA. So, just wanted you to be aware of that. And then, historic district guidelines, those came in on Friday and they are right here. No, I did not make individual copies for all of you. I will say, if, if that is something you would seek to have, um, we can do that. It is a lengthy document, it is a hundred and twenty-two pages, I think, double-sided. I managed to get it out at this point, we have several copies available for the public in, um, my office and in the town manager's office. Um, I have a copy and, uh, we're trying to, we'll have one down at the library tomorrow as well. I, I, not that I blew the copier, but I busted the, the ink budget for the copier on Friday. So, that's why none of you received it, nor did the historic district, uh, review board receive a hard copy. But everyone received it by ma- by email on Friday, so we just wanted to make you aware of that. So, yes, we wanted to remind you that on Thursday, we're doing a public forum right here in this building at 6:30. And this is going to be really run by our consultants, which is the Commonwealth Preservation Group. They're really going to walk you through the whole document again and just highlight the, the, the changes. One of the things that, that's the biggest change from the last draft that was released to everybody, pictures galore! There are a lot of, of visuals, which I think really helps. And I've already gotten a couple of comments just today, um, from people who've told me that this is much more user-friendly from a, a resident point of view and not just from a technical point of view, which they really appreciate. So, we welcome any and all comments. This will be open for the entire month of September.
They should be very happy with the, with the, the, uh, the comp has a plan too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Katie, will the historic board members have copies for the Thursday meeting?
Um, if you would like a hard copy, we can get that for you.
Okay.
I think the toner's all been refilled as of today and so I can start making more copies.
Okay, thank you.
So, so just let me know if you would like a hard copy, then I will make sure you get it.
I would like it, but I guess I'm...
Okay.
But, but again, Mike, it's not hard and fast, the comments are due Thursday. It, it's nice to leaf through the document to get a feel as the consultant is explaining it to us.
Yes.
But i- isn't it a draft in some form or another?
This is absolutely a draft.
You're going to have a month.
I mean, the earl- yeah, but no, the earlier you can make these comments, the more receptive there'll be to doing something about them.
Well, they're going to have to collect them all.
With that, with that regard, all comments will be submitted either to myself or the town manager's office and then we will collate all those comments. And we have scheduled a joint public meeting, hopefully this works on all of your calendars, for Thursday, September 29th at 6:30 PM. Again, Commonwealth will be in attendance for that meeting. And, and the intent of that meeting is for us to then go through all the comments that we received as a whole. So, we're giving the community a solid month, uh, to review this document, submit their comments, their thoughts, their criticisms, their, their appreciation, if there is any, for this document. And at that point, we will communicate which of those, from, from the leadership standpoint, they find is valid comments and we need to address that in the document, or we're okay with how it's written or proposed and, and that's not a comment that needs to be changed or incorporated into the document. So, again, so two important meetings. So, this coming Thursday, September 8th at 6:30. It will be broadcast on Facebook as well, so that while we can't engage in a, in a give and take via Facebook, at least we're, we're trying to broadcast it so anybody can watch it who can't physically get here to the building and hear what the consultant is saying about this proposed document. And the document is now posted online on the website as well. Uh, I am going to be doing a mailing to, um, most of our contractors that work in the historic district to encourage them to attend this meeting and give them, again, a direct link to this, to this document and really ask for their input and review if they would take the time and they've got the next thirty days to hopefully weigh in on this, because they're the ones who use this document. And we hope this, this clarifies some of the criticisms that we've heard over the years, so.
Very good.
Then, um, as we, as I say, those are the two important dates. Again, the future timeline as it relates to the historic district document. Uh, so, we then will give the consultants one month after the end of September to kind of clean everything up, finalize it, and submit to us what is the final version of this guidelines to the, to the town. And at that point, we'll do a final review and then schedule our public hearing process for its consideration for adoption. So, again, we think that will all be done by the end of the year. Yay! So, we're so excited. And then lastly, as I started with, is our, is where we are in the comprehensive plan. So, there is a calendar associated with that at this point, as, as I said. They, which is Summit, is that consultant group. Um, we will have a final draft of the comprehensive plan delivered to the town on Tuesday, September 27th. And I've made the commitment that I will have hard copies printed for all the responsible boards that need to be engaged in this review. And you will be handed those hard copies at that joint meeting on September 29th that we're doing with the historic district guidelines. So, since I have you all coming here, I don't have to try and get to your houses to give it to you. And then, um, we have scheduled a similar process. I haven't, we haven't quite figured out if we're going to do a public forum with our consultant to walk through the document yet. I'm still trying to figure out how we want to flesh that out, that presentation. Uh, but we will be doing a joint meeting on October 27th. It's the last Thursday in October at 6:30 PM here in this building. And again, that will be the town council and the planning commission and with our consultant, Summit Design, uh, to again, do a full discussion, review, comments, whatever's come in. And we really want to ensure that you, you as the planning commission and the town council have a full month to digest the, the comprehensive plan document. We recognize our meeting, was it two months ago? We may not have given sufficient time between when we produced the draft to you and when we went into a meeting just two days later. Um, we recognize that was a really tight turnaround for you and so we want to make sure we, we've built more than enough time for you to, to digest it, read it, ponder it, um, and think about it at length and get your comments in to the, to the, to the joint bodies, okay? Any question on the calendars coming up?
Does, um, sort of place holder for December, like the second time for public comment?
Um, it will, it will be because we want to provide a more informal process for, for receiving public input, because if, in a, in a traditional public hearing, you're time limited to three minutes. So, we want, and, and that's why I said, we're still trying to flesh out how we're going to do that. That's the beauty of what we're going to be doing this coming Thursday for those who show up. And I know people have not had a chance yet to fully digest this, but it's a chance to engage in a conversation with our consultant present and, and they're, they're probably in the best position to answer the particular questions relative to this. Uh, I'm definitely prepared to answer overall scope of the project, why we set it up a certain way. Um, I know one of my intents in, in this document was to ensure it was more user-friendly for the citizen. Um, and I think we've accomplished that, I hope we've accomplished that. And definitely from town council, um, we've had a mission statement from them of, of where we're trying to go to make this, um, not as rigid and, and to provide more flexibility in the guidelines themselves and to be more informative. And so, again, I think that's, that's been captured in this document. But that's the intent of this coming Thursday's meeting is to, is to allow a greater exchange with the, with the citizenry at large and that it's not time limited as to, oh, you've got to stop talking right now, it's three minutes. So, yes, so in both processes, we're trying to have a more informal process to review it. And then we're going to schedule the, the true public hearing where we have to do this as an ordinance and an adoption of an ordinance, et cetera. And those, those are very specific timeframes for receiving comment. Okay, that's all I have.
All right, so, uh, thank you, Katie. So, uh, next item is announcements, next meetings. So, she already mentioned that this Thursday, uh, September 8th at 6:30, presentation on the guidelines and then also September the 29th. And then, our regular session for October is the 4th at 6:00 PM. Any, uh, anything by any of the commissioners?
Sir?
I have nothing.
Um, you sent out an email that suggested we might want to talk about a particular topic as it relates to, um, proffers.
Oh, proffers, as, as a learning.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that would be a good subject for some fill-in time, but...
Well, I, I, let me, let me, let me do a bottom line, you can correct me if you seem to need. The new information, to me anyway, was that proffers, once accepted by the town, automatically become amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Oh, yes.
And that was not something I knew about earlier. So, you know, it was, oh, okay.
Yes, they are, they are now part and parcel of your zoning ordinance. Yes. Have we tracked them appropriately?
That's the problem.
No.
That's the problem.
But actually, that's a good segue and it's not... Actually, that's a good segue, and it's not really under your domain, but it's good information to update you on as part of the whole comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance stuff that we've been doing. You all know our lack of the necessary computer tools to maintain our zoning map has been to our detriment. So as part of that, I am in the midst of obtaining a quote from, oh, good grief. I can't even get the company's name right this second, sorry. They're the vendor that the county uses to host all of their GIS data. So we have talked with them, they are working up a quotation, I have budgeted money. So our intent is to get GIS software specific to the town of Cape Charles that we will host all of our data. We will not have to maintain the property data, that will be inherited and received on a quarterly basis from the county as an update to our database. But we would be able to host particular layers specific to the town of Cape Charles, things like conditional rezonings that include proffers and flag those properties with some sort of notation, an asterisk or star of some sort on the map itself, and then you could dig in and find out what those proffers were and are. That we'd be able to map our subdivisions, and so we could call them what that subdivision name is, and it would show up as a layer on our GIS database. So just to make you aware, we're trying to close the gap with some technology to help our internal tracking of this information.
Will that technology also highlight for you the differences in names of streets between the county and what's on the signs?
Well, actually, that's all, the whole street layer is maintained by the county, including the town's streets. It's all part of that database. I can tell you.
Not in the PUDs.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Sounds like a bet.
Here's the disconnect, here's the disconnect.
Okay.
In the hollies, at the corner of Blue Heaven and Perny, there's a sign for Perny, P-E-R-N-Y. The name of the street on the county's data is P-E-R-N-E-Y.
Okay.
That's the disconnect.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, whatever you're doing, it's going to allow for recognizing that.
So there's a twofold thing I'll tell you about. So part of any subdivision plat submission that comes into the office, there needs to be a vetting of their proposed road naming to the entire county database.
Okay.
That was not occurring.
No kidding.
And that's been for a long time, just because there should be, even though it may seem clear, like, oh, that road is really, there's one in Exmore called that, and this one's all the way down here in the south. There should be no duplication of road names anywhere in the county. And that's not quite true. Or there shouldn't be things that are just really too close. You know, Cornflower Way versus Cornflower Avenue, that's too close. There should only be one Cornflower, or whatever you want to call, road, way, street, whatever. I can't fix those at this point. I can only move it forward.
I'm not expecting fixing, I just want to make sure that you get visibility of that disconnect, that's all.
Yes. And in that same regard, I don't know, the road naming, not the road naming, the, yeah, the street signs, when they get put up, that's done by the responsibility of the developer according to our standards. So in that regard, that just sounds like something either the Bay Creek folks or the association should bring to my attention or to the town's attention to figure out what should be the correct way, because we do have an official street listing that's maintained by our building official, and so we need to go through that.
The good news in this regard is there is a piece of property that I believe has been closed on that had a for-sale sign on it with a model picture, and it had the county spelling on it. And I mentioned to the sign creator, that may need to be changed, but, you know, whatever. He says, "Oh, good, they'll just probably pay me to reskin it." Never happened, but that's okay. But it says something's being followed if they're using the county's reference for the street name, so.
No, and I appreciate that comment, Dennis, because, and I didn't mention my staff report because I'm still working on getting this all scheduled. I had another email this morning. I've met with Bay Creek, with Preserve Communities, I should say, and we've set up a shared database, at this point, a shared site for us to go in and start making proposed corrections, amendments to the PUD ordinance, so we're kind of all dumping in there at this point.
Oh, my goodness.
And so we are working on the PUD ordinance at the same time that we're doing the zoning ordinance. So we're trying to align the various ordinances to come in in the right format of zoning changes to the PUD ordinance and et cetera. There's lots of planning going on right now. And I mention this because I've reached out and have heard from the homeowners' association, we are looking to schedule a meeting probably for the end of September or beginning of October, for them to alert me to their issues or concerns or thoughts on the PUD ordinance and give them a chance to preview what we think will be the major changes going forward in the PUD ordinance. And that'd be an opportune time because they've told me, I guess there's a homeowners' association meeting like third week in September. I could be wrong on that. But that's an opportunity.
My community rep sent me an email today, and I just blew it away. I couldn't give up whatever.
But on the flip side, if there are some of those issues, that would be nice to provide it to the homeowners' association so when they meet with me, that I get to hear what all the issues are and whether I can fix them or not, I don't know, but at least I can hopefully bring them to the attention and find a path forward. Because these are not things that are good, I mean, you may find them annoying just to live there, I find them terribly offensive for our 911 responders if we have bad addressing. And we cannot allow that to continue, that's all.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. I'm sure there's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.